May we pray him out?
It stands for Pardon Legion.
Pardon Legion is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
See, I think we had one addition.
Yes, if we can add Bonika Stavison and Yvette Clark or a FOIA request in response to FOIA requests. And if we can put them at J five.
So remove the other two down.
Yes.
Anything else?
For the agenda. Sport.
We're going to. Move the agenda with the addition. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Did you say J five?
J five.
Yes.
I'm gonna remove the other two down.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
New business.
Uh, this time here for brief public comments. Seeing them. Nobody on line, man?
No, we do not.
Going to the side.
No, if you want to speak, just step up for podium.
Uh, please forgive me. My name is Scott Argnie. I am, uh, I am a whistleblower from Jackson, Michigan. And I've been working with Bonnie and some other citizens of your county on uh, election investigation. We have been investigating election records. Um, I've been involved for almost two years. And there is a culture of lawlessness that is going on in Lansing. I have reason to believe it has pervaded down to the county level. Um, we, Bonnie and her people and those that have active investigations in about twenty other counties right now have been FOIAing something called the electronic poll book raw data file, which contains corroborating evidence that the director of the Michigan Bureau of Elections, Jonathan Brader, others within the Bureau of Elections and quite possibly the Secretary of State Jonathan Benson are violating both state and federal law offering public records. And the law says, and without going into detail, I realize I only have three minutes, the law supports our ability to lawfully FOIA these. Um, there's been extensive denial, which has been, uh, um, extended and pushed by the county clerk, uh, Thompson. And I can tell you, I have procured an attorney. Um, the counties that have given us persistent denials will have legal action taken against them, against the local jurisdictions and the county clerk's offices. Um, we're hoping to get a temporary restraining order on the destruction of the electronic poll book, both the laptops and the flash drives here shortly. And there will be further legal action taken against county clerks. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, let's move on to consideration of the consent calendar. Anybody have pulled anything out of there?
For the consent calendar, sport.
Who goes supportive to approve the consent calendar? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Most, most in curious? Administration report.
Well, today, uh, for you, uh, we have, uh, some cap improvement updates. Let's see, the exterior quarters all the way around the courthouse have been painted and stained. Um, it's been probably a couple of decades since that's been done. It's a lot better out there now. Uh, the new chiller has, is now up and running. Um, as of last week, I believe it was Thursday was the first day, uh, to celebrate it on our ninety degree day. On Wednesday, when we did not have air conditioning, we uh, had an ice cream social throughout the courthouse, myself and Sheila and Becky and Stephanie. We took four gallons of ice cream and popsicles and walked through the courthouse giving everybody ice cream. Um, it was so hot that by the time we were done, one quarter of the buckets was completely melted. So that's what our, uh, staff have been putting up with so graciously. Um, and we are happy to report the air conditioning is now up and going after two years of procuring this. Last week also Commissioner Smith and I attended an airport authority meeting in the city of Elma. Uh, the authority's lawyer was in attendance. Uh, he has drafted a resolution that will go to every authority members board, which will be passed in the month of June by those boards, which will remove them from the authority. So that means that Gracha County by the end of the month will be the last member of the airport authority. And when that is completed, the Gracha County Board of Commissioners then will pass a resolution accepting the responsibilities of the airport, making the Gracha County Board of Commissioners the new airport authority. And, um, and creating an advisory board for, for that. Approximately twenty days from now, the lawyer expects to have a lease drawn out uh, between the county and the city of Elma, and it will also be between the county and the not the authority that was built, but the partnership between Elma and, and the county for land ownership for leasing the grounds so that the, the control of those grounds will be solely over the, the new airport authority. Um, so we have made significant progress, uh, since the last meeting and we are hoping by the first meeting in July, which will be on a Thursday. Um, we're hoping that we will also be the authority for the airport. Anything you want to add to that since you were there also that, that stands out, I, I guess?
No, I think it's, uh, I was amazed that the, the lawyer moved to, we tried to get this done as, at least to get everybody to sign off on it. And, um, the attorney got that turned around in a day or so. And, uh, so I believe as the commissions in the, in the different entities are meeting, they'll sign off on that and then we'll have it done, you know, be done pretty quick. Really, I was really surprised. I thought it'd be, we'd be dragged out to the fall, but I think we'll be looking at those work there. Uh, maybe a month, month, six weeks.
It may interest you that we did start the surveying for the fuel tank project out there also. So they'll be putting in new fuel tanks. Uh, hopefully shortly.
Yeah, that was the other thing they brought. They thought that was, they're gonna try to get the equipment there, like they get, they'll get the tanks there. You'll see them. They're gonna survey, try to get all the equipment, the meters, everything there before they start digging. So they're not, they, what is it? A sixty window they have? Sixty day window, I think? So the survey, they're gonna stop after the survey. And then when they get all the equipment, the meters, everything it needs to be put into this thing to make this thing work. And then they're gonna start back up to be done in a sixty day window. So they'll be in and out of there and the tanks will be put in. So. So that's coming right along and, and A's pay the bulk of that.
So we had a successful landfill inspection. Um, there were a few items, a, a, a little bit of debris and one tree that had fallen that we hadn't noticed that we need to clean up. Um, the EPA was very pleased with the way that the landfill looked, uh, happy about that. As you know, we have successfully negotiated with one of the two unions within the sheriff's office. Um, historically, when we negotiate with the sheriff's office, we're able to negotiate with both unions simultaneously. Uh, typically they're looking for close to the same thing. Um, this year we have not been able to negotiate with the, with the road patrol corrections officers, uh, they're and the reason for that is they are currently looking or considering switching unions. So we might not see them come to the table for, for a, a little bit of time here. Um, so that's why there's a delay in settling with one union and not having started negotiations with a second. I know when I present information to you in closed session about this, I presented it together. And that's why we've only settled with one and haven't begun with the other. We have had our tenth member reach out to us to join our BITE program, um, in the past couple of weeks. So that program continues to grow. We're gonna be undergoing a website refresh. Uh, this is part of our contract. This is not an additional cost. So if you see something change in the website in the next couple of months, um, that is why every five years in our contract, it says that we, we are given a refresh of charge. Um, Matthew is heading this project up and Sheila has a design team that she's putting together to add her flair to our online presence. Uh, departments will also be asked to look at the content that they have on their, uh, individual pages to make sure it's up to date. Um, and I guess what you should expect to see shortly is we will be uh, bringing to the board a social media policy and a work from home policy in agreement. So. If you have any questions on the administration report, I'd be happy to.
Any questions? Any reports, commissioners reports?
Uh, on the twenty second of May, I attended the Birkenridge Village Council meeting. Uh, the village president was absent because he was down celebrating his oldest grandson's graduation. That was in Texas. They enjoyed themselves very much. In fact, that grandson along with his aunt, his uncle, and, and their three little kids, he escorted to help them bring them back to Michigan. So he's in Michigan right now. They all enjoyed themselves. On the twenty fourth, we had a, uh, court health meeting in St. John's. Um, it was status quo. Everything was normal there. Uh, there was no special comments, no public. So it was just business as usual. And so that was my report.
Um, I had three meetings. I had Alma meeting, um, at the end of, uh, last month. And again, they talked about the, um, airport and different things that were going on in the community. And I also attended a meeting, MSU Extension in Lansing. And, um, that was, they had a couple of speakers there. I also took some guests from Gracha County. It was on agriculture and the temperature that has changed and how, uh, farming is, you know, like you can see now, we've had a lot of dry weather and, uh, a lot of the fields are not cloud jet or the crops aren't in. And that seems to be a concern, a big concern. One of the things that I brought up is that, well, there's concern because of feeding the cattle and being able to, uh, bring things to the grocery store. But one of the things I brought up is that I have a lot of friends that are now putting in gardens. And that was another concern, they said, because, because of the dryness and the, and it's so much hotter here now that one of them was the tomatoes. I said, I've been last year, and the last two years I've helped canned tomatoes. And they said that the citrus acid in it isn't as high as it should be and it could cause uh, sickness. Somebody could get sick off of canning their own tomatoes. And so, um, during the canning season, I have a couple of cards where I'll contact them and maybe do something here in Gracha County where anybody that is doing canning that they can uh, either get online and find out some information, or they might do a class here in our county where they can tell, uh, you know, things that people need to be watching for, or maybe doing extra while they're doing their canning. And so, and then I also had a meeting at Michigan or, um, yeah, Michigan Works in Midland. We have lost some of the board members and so we have new board members coming on and, um, we have a class to refresh them and bring them up to date. And one of their problems is being cut financially. I, I think it's, um, why don't I tell you this? Was it one point three million? It seems, I can't remember now how many it was, but it's, they're being cut. Um, so that will affect, um, uh, like, while they were working, they had programs for the people in the prison, veterans and kids getting out of high school where you could go, get online, see what class, see what's available out there and then take classes um, to help you, you know, learn what you have to do when you take this job. So I'm not sure how that's gonna work out, but our next meeting, I believe, is in Saginaw and we'll be able to tour exactly what they are going to be doing. So I'll keep you posted on that. And that's the end of mine.
Well, I went to Greater Gracha and I went to the Alma Commission. No great shakes at either one. I went to C O Bauer's one hundredth birthday party. That was kind of fun. He's a character.
Who was that?
C O Bauer, a World War Two veteran.
Oh, okay. I know who you're talking about. Yeah.
They picked him up with a, uh, fire engine, had the sirens going, delivered him to the, across the way there.
All righty. Well, uh, as Chris said, I did attend the airport meeting and, um, I was at Parker Rex meeting. Um, they're just discussing some stuff that, uh, on their, uh, the funding, uh, which they have the funds for, uh, they're reviewing their new businesses, their budget reserves and stuff and talking about they're gonna need a truck. I did mention that we're getting rid of, they need a truck with awesome brush. I did mention that when they contacted you that we're getting rid of a truck from the animal place or something, wasn't we? So I didn't, they're gonna maybe call you. Got all the staff hired, the parks are open and they're running. So everything seems to be moving along pretty well there. They discussed the park down in Alba Township a little bit more and there'll be more discussions on there. Uh, any consideration of new business? Um, A one is we have an approval of a resolution two zero two three dash three oh two honoring Alvin Davis.
They caught them late, so they will be here in the center again.
Both of them?
No, it's about.
Okay.
G two.
G two. Okay. Then we have a resolution, uh, two zero two three, three oh three honoring Audra Stahl. Service with outstanding service with the child advocacy.
Well, Audra, if you could come up here, that would be great. Um, we couldn't let the opportunity pass us by having you in-house, uh, a few days before you retire from child advocacy. So.
Very unexpected.
Um, you know. You know, the commissioners, I may, may not know, um, for sixteen years, you, you've helped, uh, give children in Gracha County a voice that, uh, that you progressively made louder and, and louder. You know, child advocacy has been a partner with the county to make sure that the littlest of people, uh, were cared for in your programs and volunteers have, have helped us protect our children here. Um, I'm not gonna pretend like we can, we can give you the send off that child advocacy has given you, um, but we, we want to thank you. Um, so from our Board of Commissioners and from the county.
Um, Audra, I am honored to be able to say this to you. We've worked together very much over the last year, lots of years. Um, so, um, I'll read this to you. Resolution, uh, two thousand and twenty-three dash three oh three honoring Audra Stahl, all, excuse me, Audra Stahl for outstanding service with child advocacy. Whereas Audra Stahl over the last sixteen years has been an exceptional leader and advocate for the children of Gracha County as the president and CEO of child advocacy. And whereas Audra Stahl has created a fully comprehensive resource center to support the needs of Gracha County's underserved community, including but not limited to the substance abuse coalition and suicide prevention, the advocacy's child advocacy center, the court-appointed special advocates program, the food pantry, the baby pantry and the foster closet of Gracha County. Whereas Audra Stahl has maneuvered the program through the National Children's Alliance accreditation process, opening the door to state and federal funding, following the budget increase tenfold. And whereas Audra Stahl has consistently provided leadership to the community through committees, boards and supporting countless service organizations, including but not limited to the community foundation board of directors, the chamber board of directors and the Alma City Commission. And whereas Audra Stahl's drive and passion for her community has improved the quality of life for thousands of children and their families each year. And whereas Audra Stahl has a passion for her community and has motivated her staff and circle of influence to maximize outreach, education and awareness for some of the most vulnerable kids in Gracha County. Whereas Audra Stahl is retiring after a lifetime of exceptional service to the citizens of Gracha County. Now, therefore, be it resolved, all members of the Gracha County Board of Commissioners honor and recognize Audra Stahl and her commitment to the ideals of service to the children of Gracha County.
You will need a
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I would, uh, be happy to, uh, put forward a resolution two thousand twenty-three, three oh three and have it put into the permanent record.
I'll second that.
The move's supported. We'll have a roll call vote.
Commissioner Owens.
Here.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes.
Commissioner Bunty.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Gay is absent.
Thank you very much. All right, so we're gonna skip that. Uh, the ARP amendment, I've, I've requested for the child advocacy.
Yep, I will introduce that for you real quick. Also, if you were on the board when, in, in two thousand and one, when, uh, this board awarded the child advocacy a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars a year for three years from our, um, ARP funds for the court-appointed special advocates program. Today, Audra is here to ask, uh, to amend that contract and, uh, I'll let her get into the details of what the amendment is for. Um, so if you can take that from there, please.
Yeah. Well, thank you for that resolution too. That was very unexpected and I appreciate that. Appreciate what you guys do here. Um, as you may or may not know, uh, two years ago, we came to you, our CASA program, which stands for Court Appointed Special Advocates, um, was in some trouble. We lost, um, federal funding across the state. All the CASA programs in the state of Michigan had their funding cut through the Victim of Crime Act fund. And so that left us, um, kind of in alert for a while and rescue funds, um, helped keep that program going. As we are coming into our final year, this next fiscal year of rescue funds, we have decided that it's time to start kind of preparing ourselves for what life will look like, um, for that CASA program without that funding. Um, and so one of the things that we have done is, um, we had a position open up in our substance abuse and suicide prevention program. And so Rachel, who was our CASA recruitment coordinator, came to us and asked if she could be considered for that position. Um, of course, we want to keep her in the agency. Um, so we granted her that wish. Um, she moved along to that program, which then left just one employee with our CASA program. Um, that's a feasible amount of time to keep that program running. It's gonna be a little bit more work for Michelle as she's gonna kind of take on two roles. Um, but we feel it's really probably the best for sustainability to get that down to one paid position instead of two. Um, what we have found since COVID and in the aftermath of COVID is that the needs are, they're so increased, um, in the families that we're seeing. Food, clothing, basic needs, um, everything has increased at beyond our belief. Um, we are seeing kids in the Children's Advocacy Center, um, with more severe physical abuse neglect than we'd ever seen before COVID. Um, we have had more children with suicidal ideation than we had ever seen before. So much so that, so that we have implemented some new screening tools and some new, um, programs for those kids. Um, at some, at some times when we do our screening tools, we, it's so severe, we can't let them leave our building until we have, uh, someone from Gracha Integrated Health Network that's able to step in and help. So basically the needs have just increased, um, beyond what we would have imagined. Um, the baby pantry is one that I'm gonna highlight because that is one of the areas I'm looking at, um, adding to that contract. The baby pantry this year, um, has seen the highest numbers ever. Um, in two, twenty-two, we served one thousand seven hundred and eighty-eight families, which was an eighty-six percent increase from the year prior. Uh, we gave out a record high of forty-nine thousand diapers. I mean, I don't even know if you can imagine forty-nine, almost fifty thousand diapers, um, eight thousand food items and four hundred containers of formula to families in Gracha County. Um, the program has grown so much for the baby pantry and we also took on Sheila's, um, baby, which was the foster closet um, this last year and have really, um, tried to expand on that as well, um, not just serving our kids who are in foster care, but other kids in the community um, that are, you know, in need of clothing and, and bedding and items like that. So what we've done is we've combined the baby pantry and the foster closet and we've created a new position, part-time for someone to run that because it's just become, um, just more than we could, you know, handle in-house. So in a nutshell, what we're looking at doing is that hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars for CASA, we're just asking if we could spread that out a little bit um, into the baby pantry, into that Children's Advocacy Center, just to meet some of those basic needs that we're finding, um, that people are having. I told Chris, it's really, um, kind of just getting more bang for your buck. We're just really trying to do more and more, um, as much as possible with those funds, uh, to serve as many families and kids as we can. So that's, does that explain that pretty good? I think hopefully, or questions? Maybe that would help if I had questions.
We're coming into the third year, aren't we?
Yes.
So.
Yeah. I wish we had three more. Yeah, it's. I know. Could you just give us three more?
Sure you do when you have children that are being abused. Do you, what do you do? Do you keep these children or put them in another?
So our Children's Advocacy Program, um, Children's Advocacy Center Program works with a multidisciplinary team, sheriff's office, Alma Police Department, Breckenridge, St. Louis, um, the prosecutor's office. And so we always have to make sure they have a non-offending caregiver. So someone that, um, will keep them safe. If it's, you know, they can't ever come into our building with the offender and we can't send them home to the offender. So Child Protective Services and then the team that's involved with law enforcement, um, we all come together, find the best placement for that child. Hopefully it's with somebody in the family that can take care of them. But if not, then they go into foster care.
And is this, um, countywide or is it particularly in one area?
Uh, we serve all of Gracha County.
But I think it's more of a, in one. Oh, do you think it's? No, I think it's.
Um, it's pretty spread out.
Yeah, I, I would say, I mean, if you're looking at numbers, maybe because Alma's a bigger city, maybe the numbers are a little bit higher, but it's really across the whole county. So, so, yeah, it is. We serve about close to two hundred kids a year through that program. So two hundred, um, so, and those are cases that are either severe physical abuse, sexual abuse, witness to violence or, um, meth or drug exposure. So those are the worst cases in the county. The smaller, uh, I don't want to say there's anything that's smaller when it comes to child abuse, but the other cases all just go through Child Protective Services. Any other questions?
Another question for you. So, um, can people donate like diapers to you? Take, bring them over or?
Yes, absolutely.
Clothing or anything like that?
Yes, we do have a, a pretty good Facebook page, Child Advocacy, Gracha County, and we post our needs almost every day on there. Um, they had a, they had, they had no size six and size three diapers as of yesterday. So I went out and donated two big boxes. Um, because sometimes it just comes up so quick, you know, that things, there's a need for something specific. We recently collected pillows, um, for the foster closet because a lot of times when kids go into foster care, um, it's just nice to have their own pillow, you know, no, nothing like using someone else's old pillow, you know, so to have a new pillow and uh, blanket and, you know, that kind of stuff. So, but yeah, uh, we take all kinds of donations. Toys, books, um, clothes, you name it. Money, money's our favorite donation. But yeah, we take all that. Yes, yeah.
I move to allow the amendment to the, our contract.
I'll second that.
Move this word to, uh, allow to change their contract to spread it out. All in favor?
Aye.
Both, most in curious?
Thank you so much.
Audra, if you can stick around for the resolution, I would love it. And if you don't, thank.
I'll stay. That's all. Well, thank you.
Want to move down to Keegan?
Yeah.
Ian, we're moving you on.
I'll make this fairly short, sweet. Uh, today I've got the two thousand twenty-three tax rate request for Gracha County and this is for the operated village. Um, this year's, uh, reduction fraction was a one, so, uh, the county didn't see any rollback of any kind. So we'll be levying the exact same amount as last year, um, five point five two zero six mils. And I don't know if anybody has any questions on that or how we come up with the figures or anything like that.
So what can we expect to see for the average taxpayer who owns a home? What, what do we expect to see for their tax bill this year?
Uh, so from two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-three, the, um, the CPI was capped at five percent. So across the board, everybody's taxable value increased by five percent. Um, the actual CPI was seven point nine percent and that's what we use in the reduction fraction. Um, but for tax purposes, it's capped at five percent. So fairly big increase across the board.
It was a big percent?
Yes, it was. It's the biggest it's ever been.
So if somebody has, um, property, say an acre of land and, and their home is a hundred thousand dollars, what would be the?
Uh, five percent more. Increase by five percent, yeah.
So you're saying the, the property value went up almost eight percent, but we're capping. The law caps the, the tax bill to go up five percent.
Yep, yeah. So for the, the reduction fraction, the state's. Yeah, yeah. So for the, the reduction fraction, the state says that we still have to use the seven point nine percent, but as far as tax bills are concerned, the property can only increase five percent. Yeah.
So how do they figure you get a two point nine discount?
What's that?
A two point nine discount.
Basically, yeah, so.
That's how you sell it, right?
Yeah, and because the um, and because the uh, for the reduction fraction, we use the seven point nine percent, not the five. Um, there are no reduction fractions in Gracia County this year, and I have not seen any reduction fractions anywhere so far, so.
All right, any questions for Keegan?
No, I'd make a motion that we approve the five point five two zero six.
The support.
Who dis support it? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Both. Motion carries.
All right, thank you very much. Have a good night.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know. All right, uh, gonna move right on to you folks in here. Um, we had one other thing scheduled before, but that's okay. We'll get started. You folks are here. Ali, and let me see if I can come to the podium, please.
Hi, I'm Bonnie Gis Davison. I've been a lifelong resident here in Gracia County, and I thank you for the time tonight that allowed me to present my information publicly. I want to make it crystal, crystal clear my goals. First off, I would like to obtain public information and review for discrepancies and investigate the issues around the FOIA requests. Um, also, I'd like to educate all of the clerks in Michigan on federal and state laws retaining voter record keeping. I've been investigating the voter registration since the beginning of nineteen, or twenty twenty-two. I discovered my husband, Tim's information, was not in the Secretary of State database. After several months, it was discovered that his date of birth was wrong. The bigger question remains, did his vote count? Uh, I recently attended an information session that Scott Ogney presented, and he provided data that it showed errors and discrepancy in voters' registration in the reports. I wanted to learn more what was going on in Gracia County, and I began my investigation. The first step was to FOIA the information, looking at voter history and change history. I identified some discrepancies in mine and my husband's report. I shared my story, and forty total residents from Gracia wanted to find out what their reports had shown. Um, so they were interested in finding out what's happening. The second step is to compare the electronic poll book, which is referred to as the EPB, to these reports in the Qualified Voter File. The EPB is the original source of the election process, and it is the township's clerk's responsibility to fulfill the FOIA requests. The law clearly outlines the retention and preservation and destruction of voting records. Federal law says twenty-two months, but Michigan law is stricter. It's twenty-four months that they must retain this information after an election. Many township clerks have responded to my photo, my FOIA that this data has been deleted at the local level. Does that mean they violated the law? Yes, they have. The clerks have been referring to policy and directives given to them by the Bureau of Elections. Let me be perfect, perfectly clear that policy does not overlaw, overstep the law. So they again have violated the law. The federal and state laws clearly state the EPB book information at the local and township level shall be kept. It's called the EPB and poll list. Federal law fifty-two dot two zero seven oh one talks about jurisdiction and the compelled to product. That means we have a right to the FOIA information. Not the county or the state, and the true custodial of the election is the, at the local level. They're breaking the law by telling us that we can't get this information. The resolution to va, for this violation would be the, for the clerks to resurrect or reconstruct their EPB. And these steps are clearly outlined in their clerk manual on page thirty-four to forty-one. I provided that information to the clerks, but they continue to tell me it's not available, it's been deleted. On a final note, to the Director of the BOE, Lori Burberry, has issued notification requesting requests are to be sent to the Bureau. Angie Thompson sent an email to the clerks directing them that if they received any request from Bonnie, they're to go to the state. The fact that some clerks are refusing to speak to me now, that doesn't feel very good, so much for a warm community that I've lived in my entire life. Could this be considered obstruction from obtaining public records? That's my question. Elected officials work for the people and must follow the law if they're to remain in their position, if they have been sworn in as a public official. In summary, I have outlined the violations of the law. I will leave a packet of the laws that have been violated for your review. I've outlined the opportunity for the local clerks to reconstruct the EPB, allowing them to retain the records for twenty-four months as outlined per law, so that would negate them breaking the law. So I'm trying to help them, but they're, it's falling on deaf ears. Again, it's the needs of EPB to, is an essential piece of our data that is necessary to validate the discrepancies between our local election reports and the state reports. We have found that the state reports do not show what our local reports are showing. I know that our local clerks are doing a really good job at collecting the information, but once it leaves their township, city, it's being changed at the state level. So that's where the focus is at. I am requesting that each one of you commissioners contact your local clerks slash FOIA coordinators and recommend they provide the FOIA information once they reconstruction this, both the EP book, EPB book and, and the poll list. Um, this exercise will put them in compliance with the law and maintenance records. And just finally, I have filed criminal complaints with the City of St. Louis, City of Alma, and our Sheriff's Department. They are going to investigate these violations at the state level. And I want to repeat, this is at the state level. This is not our local level that's, it's doing this, with the changing of the records. On that note, do you have any questions?
I guess my question would be, and I'm, I just go vote. That's all. I don't know how to get my idea. I go vote. When you look at, you're at the state level, why, why, I mean, as, as a county board, we manage the county. We manage the finances, we manage the operation of the county. We don't really manage sheriff, we manage the finance, sheriffs department. We don't manage the court office, how they do their job. We manage the, the finance, courts office, right?
I'm not sure why, I don't know if we have any input in the election process, you know, as a county board, as county commissioner. Um, and it sounds like that you're have discontent with the state, with the Election Bureau, or wherever they are. And have you, have you been there? I mean, are you trying to get stuff from them, or?
Yeah, well, actually.
For a pain, just they're obstructing us every possible, or.
The county mission.
Yeah, yes, and they're using the county for the two, due to the obstruction. There have been edicts coming from uh, from Burke Thompson and various other county courts throughout the state. We have conspiracy. We're not asking the sheriff or uh, chief, Ramirez, St. Louis, or the overall public safety, to investigate that. We have evidence of crimes, violations, MCL seven fifty dot two forty-eight, altering public records. And myself, I understand, and I, I, please forgive me for uh, overstepping this, but.
You, you wanna, you wanna step up here to the microphone?
Yeah, sorry about that.
Our system can, I always forget to ask that.
I think it is important that the boards do take a role. You are the representatives of your communities. You are the representatives of your constituents. There is lawbreaking going on in the election system. You can call it voter fraud because there are fraudulent records being released, okay? The records on the back end of this whole process do not match the numbers at the front end. There is no reason for the public records, the public election records, to be in a constant state of change. What the clerks look at is not what the public is given by the Michigan Bureau of Elections. There is credit to sheriff, chief Ramirez, and uh, public safety in Alma. All we have asked them to do, take our cases, get a report together, give us an opportunity to speak to the prosecutor. I am pleased that your prosecutor has accepted our request for an invitation, and Bonnie and I will be meeting with the prosecutor and hopefully the rest of law enforcement uh, regarding this case. We have active investigations in almost twenty counties. We're in law enforcement now in thirteen counties. And I've spoken to several prosecutors on this. The problem is, we have obstruction of justice with the Michigan State Police, with the Michigan Attorney General, and I'm trying to bring criminal uh, charges against her out of Jackson County for obstruction of justice. And we've gotten to the point, who do you trust? The county clerk has an obligation to her constituents in this county first and foremost, and to the rule of law, not to directives from the Michigan Bureau of Elections. And she is complicit in destroying public records that federal law and state law prohibits by encouraging these directives.
Well, I, I guess I'm gonna tell you, when, when you tell me somebody's breaking the law, that you tell me. I mean, when the prosecutor tells me somebody's breaking the law, I think that, that probably means a little bit more, but I, I want to tell you that.
That's nice.
I have the, the, myself, and I know I can speak for this more, but we have the confidence in our township clerks and our county clerks, our city clerks, uh, of what they're doing, and if they're doing it what they are told to do by the Election Bureau.
Is that a quote, breaking the law?
Well, you say they're breaking the law.
Just, I don't want to get in. Don't destroy these records.
Well, I, I don't know that. I mean, I, I'm not a lawyer, and I don't.
That with you, it's, you, you can read the law yourself, and then you'll know that it's very clear, twenty-two or twenty-four months, and if you look at Michigan, which overrides.
Look, I just believe that, that this board really probably, I, I don't think we can instruct township clerks or city clerks of what to do, how they run their operation. And uh, I think probably you ought to, you know, maybe take your petition to the state of Michigan, or the FBI, or whatever.
Who's gonna stop you right there, Sam? The whole point of bringing this before all of you guys was to inform you of what is going on and what we have uncovered at a county level. Hoping to inspire desire within each of you to want to get more acclimated or accustomed or informed or educated to what we have uncovered. And so now we bring this information to you today, and now you're saying, well, we don't really want to hear, go ahead and take it somewhere else. You are an elected official, you work for us, we hired you, you took an oath to uphold the Constitution. It is your responsibility to do that. Each and every one of you. And when we file a FOIA request to be charged for information that is public information and belongs to us is absurd. And furthermore, when we have township clerks and county clerks that refuse to give us the information and follow the FOIA request in a timely manner increases time that she has to spend on giving us that information from which you want to bill us for. All we're saying is.
Have we billed you?
No.
Have we billed you?
In the Gracia County Herald?
I know in the Gracia County Herald.
It says right here that you're considering it.
She discussed it. Have we billed you?
You're considering it.
Have we made a motion to bill you?
The reason that we came here was to show you this information.
My question is to you, have we billed you?
The answer is no.
Okay, thank you. Um, I really don't think that there's anything we can resolve for this evening. I really want to thank you for your time. Thank you for time. And uh, as I say, I, I just don't think this board can resolve any of that issue. And if, when somebody tells me breaking the law, I.
You just did a couple resolutions to, to, you know, uh, audit services of these people. And, you know, sir, I'm more than happy to sit down with you to show you the evidence uh, where they have.
I'm not a lawyer. I don't need to look at evidence.
You know what, sir? Are you a American citizen? I, there ought to be concern, okay, because our election system should be transparent. It is not transparent. We have a culture of lawlessness in Lansing. We are trying to address it with local law enforcement, which kudos to them.
Sure, I'm sure we'll hear more about that if you file suits or whatever you've done. I'm sure we'll hear more about that down the road. And um.
This was an introduction to how you, to be aware of what's happening. And that's where, what my goal was, is to educate people. So it's one thing if you don't know you're breaking the law, and the second thing is if you know you're breaking the law and you continue to do it, that's another whole story. So it calls the question, and it allows the clerks to right a wrong. You are connected to each and one of the townships, and you could support it if the questions asked, if you had the knowledge. So I gave you the knowledge. I'm gonna give you the tools and resources for the law, because if you believe the law, it's here.
Leave your mother walking, leave that with us.
I just hope you take the time to read it.
Thank you. All righty. All right, folks. We'll go back to J one. Okay, hello. Um, we're going back to what's J one, the consideration approval of resolution twenty-three two zero two three dash three oh two honoring Colleen Davis.
That. I'm excited to be here tonight to talk about Colleen Davis. She is our twenty twenty-three uh, Child Advocate of the Year for Child Advocacy. Um, Colleen has consistently been a champion for children in our county. If you're not familiar with Colleen, she has been um, a member of our Board of Directors and has served as the Secretary for Child Advocacy. She has been a instrumental part of our multidisciplinary team with the Children's Advocacy Center Program, and she's one of the founding board members for our CASA program, Court Appointed Special Advocates. I did bring a couple things I want to say on paper, so I'm gonna look down for a minute, but um, Colleen's advocacy for abused and neglected children reaches far beyond the courtroom. As a member of the Prosecutor's Office, Colleen sees the importance in showing up in order to protect children in our community. In case meetings, having Colleen at the table produces action. Outside of meetings, she exhaustively researches her cases and gathers every detail of information. She spends countless hours strategizing and planning how to keep children safe. She demonstrates leadership on a range of issues vital to ensuring investigations are victim-centered, and the prosecution of offenders limits additional trauma to children involved in the greatest extent possible. Colleen reaches across disciplines to engage appropriate mental health services, court education and accompaniment, and other resources necessary to ensure each child and their protective family members are equipped with resources they need to focus on seeking justice. Colleen goes above and beyond her paid role at the Prosecutor's Office and just does amazing work for the children in our community. So we were honored um, to honor her as our twenty twenty-three Child Advocate of the Year, and we're excited to be a part of this today with the resolution, so.
Thank you.
And I would first like to say, um, as a former commissioner, I truly value all of your time. Uh, I know the hours you all spend here reviewing and preparing, um, and so it was not any slight on behalf of our office, myself, Chief Assistant General Shepherd and Colleen Davis. We uh, happened to be in court running late. Uh, court, as you are well aware, is supposed to be over at four thirty, and we were on the record until just now. So I apologize for being late and, and causing that, but it is my honor to read into the record the resolution that has been proposed um, that we uh, are submitting. Um, additionally, I would like to say, Colleen has also been a part of the Executive Board of the Multidisciplinary Team with Audra's office, and that team, if you're not aware, was recognized uh, in our state as one of the top multidisciplinary teams, and that's a team of people that brings together uh, Colleen as part of the Prosecutor's Office, um, myself now, um, different social workers, therapists, individuals from child advocacy, uh, law enforcement representatives, uh, Sheriff Morris, detectives from every one of our agencies. So truly multidisciplinary, meaning all the individuals come together, and every month we review every single case in this county that involved a child, a child as a, as a um, victim. So sometimes there are physical abuse cases, sometimes there are sexual abuse cases, um, but uh, truly tough work, and uh, Colleen's been a very active and instrumental part of that group. So not only was she just awarded Child Advocate of the Year, the multidisciplinary team that she's on, that Audra's on, that Sheriff Morris is on, uh, was also recognized for top in the state last year. So I just also wanted to make the board aware of that. Um, so the resolution is Resolution two zero two three dash three oh two honoring Colleen Davis for being named the Gracia County Child Advocate of the Year. Whereas Colleen Davis has advocated for children within and outside of her position in the Gracia County Prosecutor's Office as an assistant prosecutor for the past ten plus years. And whereas Colleen Davis as a member of the Children's Advocacy Center of Gracia County has proven to be an exceptionally fierce advocate for children. And whereas Colleen Davis was instrumental in bringing court-appointed special advocates, CASA, to Gracia County while training, educating, and supporting CASA volunteers in their efforts to advocate for the best interests of children. And whereas Colleen Davis provides leadership while ensuring investigations are victim-centered, and the prosecution of offenders limits additional trauma to children involved to the greatest extent possible. And whereas Colleen Davis is quick to reach out to victims, provide reassurance and support. And whereas Colleen Davis is quick to reach out to victims, provide reassurance and support for efforts to put each child and their family on solid footing to continue their journey of healing. And whereas Colleen Davis goes well above and beyond her role as a prosecutor to mobilize relevant agency and community support meant to bolster confidence and reduce trauma for some of our most vulnerable kids in Greshit County. Whereas Colleen Davis has been named the two thousand twenty-three Child Advocate of the Year. Now, therefore, be it resolved that all members of the Greshit County Board of Commissioners honor and recognize their colleague, Colleen Davis and her commitment to the ideals of service to the children of Greshit County.
I need a motion on this resolution.
A move.
I'll second that.
The movement is supported to, uh, support this resolution. Uh, roll call vote.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes.
Commissioner Bunting.
Yes.
Commissioner Gay is absent, Commissioner Owens.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you very much.
I must also say, please do not disguise her size with how fierce she is.
Fierce things come in small packages.
I just, I want to thank everybody, thank Child Advocacy, thank the board. And, um, my office for this, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Forward to, who's the unit, so that's, yeah, that is bad. Back here.
It's online.
Are you online for the sheriff, the re- renewal agreement?
Yep, so I've got two agreements that I wanted to discuss with the board. The first one is for the courthouse access control system, which is basically a key card system here at the courthouse. We currently have a service agreement with EPS for that system. And, uh, I'm asking the board to renew that service agreement. They're proposing a three-year contract, which I think is fair, um, and the cost of that is two hundred and eighty-five dollars per month. And then, secondly, I'm asking that the board add or sign an agreement for a similar system over at the sheriff's office and, and jail. They have an access control, um, system over there as well, it's a key card system as well as, uh, a door control system that they use. Since I've been here at Greshit County, they've never had a service agreement on that software or system before, but after discussing it with the jail administrator and the sheriff, we think that it's important to add a service agreement to that system as well. Um, it was installed, I think, between ten and five and ten years ago, closer to ten years ago, and as it ages, we just find ourselves calling EPS out, um, one at a time to kind of address issues with it. Some of the things that that service agreement, uh, gets us is priority scheduling, which is something that we uh, really appreciate with them, because sometimes they're not able to get out here right away, and we just kind of have to rely on their scheduling to come out and address issues with the system, so with the service agreement, we'd be kind of at the top of their list for handling service calls. And they, this agreement does include twelve emergency or after-hours, uh, visits as well. If anyone has any questions, I'd be able to address those.
In the courthouse building, is that, is that a key just to let you in, or does, does the same key let you into like different departments upstairs in the court system, or? It's all the same key or, or different levels keys?
Uh, it's, it's the same key card, but that key card can be used, uh, in different areas of the courthouse and depending who you are, you may have access to only certain doors.
I see, so you can adjust that card, so Chris can go just one place and not another or something like that?
Yep.
I see. Same thing in the sheriff's department, you've got different places you can go in there.
So all my officers have a card that's called everywhere all the time, so they can access any office or anything in case there be a problem.
Here or there?
Here or at the jail, yes.
So what this new agreement will do is it gives us twelve free, uh, calls, where before we were paying for each of those calls that, that gives us priority.
Would you please?
So we're looking at, uh, for the courthouse, two hundred and eighty-five dollars a month, and for the jail, three hundred and fifty dollars a month, is that what you're saying?
Yep, that's, that, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
But that's it? You don't have anything else? I just want to make sure when I make the motion, I get, get it right.
Can I have a question?
Oh. Well, let me answer, um, Commissioner Bailey's first, and then I'll get yours in a second. So the way that the contracts are, and there's actually two parts of it, one is the service agreement. But because we're also doing the server migration that the board's already approved, that's actually written into the contract language as well, but the board has already approved that part of it, so.
This is an addu- this is an addendum to the.
We kind of, I mean, it's an addendum only because the service agreement is up for renewal and in order to get discounted pricing on the migration portion of it, um, we think it's important to bring this.
Angie knows what we need.
Yeah.
She's got it figured out.
Alright.
Okay, I have a question, I want to make sure I understand this. So this is during, um, open hours at the courthouse, with the key card or is that after-hours? Both? So what about the panic button? Do we, do they still use that? I mean.
What do you mean by panic button?
You know, like, since they have a problem in their office, they push.
So these key cards key into the doors, courthouse, into offices and stuff like that, that's all it is, it's not a panic alarm.
Oh, okay.
That would be a separate contract.
Okay.
Would you please?
Yeah, I would go ahead and make that motion and, and, and you would, please read it.
To sign the two contracts, courthouse assessment control system service agreement at two hundred and eight or two hundred and eighty-five a month, and the sheriff's office jail access control system service agreement at a cost of three hundred and fifty a month for three-year contract.
So move, support.
I'm willing to support and accept both these contracts.
Aye.
And, uh, we're down to the intergovernmental agreement for the blight orders with New Haven Township. And this is just another township, one of my townships will want to come on for a blight, um, it's a thousand dollars I think they're gonna pay. We have the agreement, they've signed it already, I think, yep.
I'm sorry, I'm looking for a motion to allow the chairman to sign and enter into the screen.
Will support it to, uh, accept New Haven into the blight program, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Vote, motion carries. Any other business?
I'd like to know, do we have a date on the county from the sheriff? Is there anything that we'd need to know, or how's everything going?
Um, I need to update, uh. Uh, pretty busy at the sheriff's office, um. I know you guys are talking about fees for FOIA, uh, one of my detectives last week on a criminal matter, had to do twenty hours of FOIA work on body camera and car cameras. Took twenty hours out of his forty-hour week last week, so we're getting a lot of those, um, but we do charge at the sheriff's office for, um, something like that, so. Uh, crime never stops, um, we, uh.
How about the fire up north? Did we send any, anybody?
Not anybody, bailing for that fire.
Is that under control now?
Eighty-five percent is what I heard last.
And then the others?
Ninety, it's morning, I think.
I see a lot of ambulances out, is there a lot of accidents, or is that drugs, or?
Um, a lot of ambulances out, we have a lot of, uh. How do I want to say this, I mean, spot, Greshit County isn't getting any younger.
How's that?
Yeah, we have a lot of senior activity.
Yeah, a lot of senior activity, yes. Additional public comment, the initial public comments.
Thank you for the opportunity to, uh, run my mouth through the time. I did want to publicly, uh, um, as a whistleblower, I just publicly wanted to comment, uh, and, and, uh, thank, uh, Sheriff Morris for his, uh, courtesy in doing his oath of office, which is to, uh, uh, investigate criminal complaint. There is actually law that says that clerks are supposed to do the same, and that is not really being done. There's a few clerks that are, um, I have a couple of good clerks in Jackson County that have followed through and done their own investigations and enlisted law enforcement and cooperated with my investigation. I didn't want to come up here and admonish the, uh, Greshit County Board because I'm not a resident. I love the county, except the wind turbines, I could do without those, but I think it's a beautiful county, the, uh, flat farmland and the rivers that run through it. Um, I've always appreciated that in Greshit County, but, um, I think from a leadership perspective, um, I do believe that it is important that elected public officials do, because just being aloof about things implies that you place no value in a particular process. We have a very, very flawed election process, which the Secretary of State felt is, it's all perfect, it's all great, and it is deeply flawed. And a lot of clerks have been intimidated, including county clerks, into obeying directives versus obeying the law. And sir, I'd love to put together a package, uh, perhaps I can distribute something, uh, in the future by email to, uh, the county board in terms of the laws and ones that have been broken.
I think I, didn't you give us what, I just, I.
I have some additional laws that, uh, yeah, I have some additional laws that I have put together, but, um, uh, I think, I think it is something that the board, uh, uh, it doesn't matter whether or not, and I agree with you, the law does not give you a lot to do, uh, in terms of selecting election process or anything else. Now, a board can sue the state of Michigan, I didn't come here to say that. Uh, but, uh, I think it is important that county board members recognize and learn if there is a deeply flawed system, if there's a flawed system within the sheriff's department. Would you take an interest in examining that? If there is a flawed system in the child advocacy, would you take an interest in checking that, examining that? I don't understand why the chair does not feel that the election system is worthy of the same considerations and examination. And I do think it is important that, uh, county board members recognize that sort of thing and take an interest in what is going on with the election process. Thank you.
I, I probably shouldn't make a comment, but I want to make one comment, so you selected me out personally.
Okay.
If you come to me, or you folks come to me and said there's a flaw in the sheriff's department, I would not do anything different, except have somebody look at it, just like you're, you're having somebody look at it. Yes, but I would not go to the sheriff and say, you're doing this wrong because you told or you told me, I would not go to the sheriff and tell him that. Because I don't know what the sheriff does all the time, you know?
And I understand.
That's above my pay grade.
I understand, but you would have to get yourself informed to a degree to get somebody else involved, correct?
I have a packet right here, I'm gonna look at, that you've given.
Okay, okay, and that's all we can ask.
Okay, alright, very good, thank you. Anything else? Will you adjourn?
Vote adjourned, sure.